Frank Traglia and Sarah Ethier. Do we have Sal? Jen? Or Matt?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. All right, let's get started. Um, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hang on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, the first item on our agenda is the proposed changes to the 2020-21 Thomiston School District calendar due to the limited waiver of school sessions due to COVID-19. Um, you all should have, um, received the email regarding the changes in the calendar. And we're looking for, um, if we put a motion on the table, then we can discuss. So do we have a motion?
This is Roxy Finer. I'll make a motion to vote to accept approved changes to the 2021 Thomiston Schools District's calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Frank Traglia will second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion?
Beth, would you like me to provide any explanation?
Um, if you can do a high level.
Sure. So basically, the State Department of Education solicited the State Board of Education to delay the start of school by three days. So I took that, um, permission and I moved the start of school back three days. However, Thomiston Public Schools has a calendar of student school days, uh, that is one day longer than state mandate. So I also added that day to delay the start of school until the first of September. Along with that, I proposed half-days to get the children used to wearing masks um, and to gradually get them back into the groove of school.
Thank you, Francine. Does anyone have any, um, questions for Francine or? Is there any discussion? Everybody, I think you're on mute if you are trying to talk. Okay.
Sorry, sorry, this is Heather. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I just have a question for Francine. Are other schools doing as many half-days? I know I've heard a lot of, uh, feedback from parents regarding so many half-days. Um, I'm, I'm neither here nor there. I understand the, the point of them, but um, I'm just curious why so many, so to speak?
Sure. So the, the way that we're doing it in Thomiston is different than the way other school districts are doing it. Some are choosing half-days just simply to shorten the day. Uh, we have a purpose. So the first week of half-days would be an even shorter than typical early dismissal so that we can spend that day getting the children used to coming back to school, get them acclimated to the new, um, hygiene rules and not feed them in-person at school so that we can add that element the following week. For the second week of school, we would have regular type of early dismissal days where students would be fed lunch. So we would add that component on slowly growing the day over that period of two weeks. And then we would go to full-day instruction starting the fourteenth of September. So the purpose of our half-days is to get acclimated the first week to the new conditions of school in-person. And then the second week would be to get acclimated again, but also to add on what lunch feels like um, when fed in-person and how to manage your mask um, while at lunch so that the third week of school, we would be up and running with a full-school day.
Okay, understood. Um, my other comment is, I'm not sure if you're aware, uh, Play and Learn is not allowing after-school or before-school care um, unless you have an infant four or under in the program. So, I mean, I, I, I know school isn't a babysitter. I understand that aspect, but um, I just know a lot of parents are kind of scratching their head, um, thinking, what are they gonna do with their kids type thing? So ju- just a general comment, not um, to sway anybody, just, uh, to put on record that Play and Learn is doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Is there any other questions or comments regarding the motion?
Okay, we will vote again tonight, um, by unanimous consent. So I would just ask the board members, um, I'm gonna ask if there's any opposed or any abstentions. Are there, is there anyone opposed to the motion? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Um, the next item on our agenda is, um, the proposed change to Policy 5132, which is, um, the dress and grooming, um, policy. So the first action that we need to take is to, um, fast-track this policy to, um, waive the two regular meetings, um, to read the policy and review. Um, so we would need two-thirds of the vote from the Board of Education. Do we have a motion, um, to fast-track this policy?
5132, which is, um, the dress and grooming, um, policy. So the first action that we need to take is to, um, fast-track this policy to, um, waive the two regular meetings, um, to read the policy and review. Um, so we would need two-thirds of the vote from the Board.
Is everybody still there?
I'm here.
Okay, I got, had gotten a little feedback there.
Yeah, I, I, I've seemed to be on a delay. It seemed, it seemed like you were hearing, I was hearing the same thing twice.
Yep. Um, I'll ask again if we have a motion to vote to allow the proposed change to Policy 5132 to be brought to potential action immediately without consideration at two regular meetings of the Board of Education.
This is Roxy Finer. I will make that motion.
Heather Patchill, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll move to vote. Is there any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to item number 4.2 on the agenda, which is, uh, the proposed change to Policy 5132. And, um, I know that you all had received a copy of that for review. Francine, I don't know if you want to just do a quick? Oh, it's up on the screen. Sorry, I'm looking at the PowerPoint now.
Basically, it says that anyone who is going to be in our schools will be obligated, any student in our schools will be obligated to wear a cloth face covering, um, in accordance with what the CDC um, says is appropriate. So that would be anyone aged two or older. But that will cover all of our students. Originally, there had been a question about, um, was it uh, older than age two or did it include age two? So it includes age-two students and older. Um, and then, uh, you can see too that there's some information in there that points to constitutional right. There have been questions in the media about the demand for a face mask and if it is somehow, uh, someone's constitutional right that's being denied. And in the case of schools, uh, we are able to make such a demand and therefore we're putting it into our school dress code so that if there is not compliance, a student can be, uh, disciplined accordingly, quite frankly.
Thank you, Francine. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion?
This is, uh, Frank Traglia. My only question I have is what are we considering cloth face covering? I mean, is it anything from a bandana to a medical mask?
Any type of cloth face covering that completely covers the nose and mouth is acceptable.
So, so then as long, I mean, anything that it could be, like I said, it could be a bandana to a medical mask, basically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Francine, this is Sarah. I have a question regarding like the preschool students. Is it gonna be, they are gonna have to wear them? It's not gonna be like they're gonna make sure, they're gonna try and get them? They have to wear them at all times?
They have to wear them at all times. Even students with special needs would have to wear them at all times. Uh, this is only the dress code for, for students. However, all staff um, would also have to wear face masks, uh, face coverings, cloth face coverings at all times, including people like myself who are in offices.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
Hi, just, uh, Matt Van Omer. I guess, is there a list of consequences for number of infractions or any of that kind of stuff, or it's all just discretion of teacher-principal working your way up the ladder?
Once this policy is processed tonight, if it is approved as written, then I'm going to be bringing it to my administrative team. And I will have them make a determination as to how they would like the discipline to be laid out. I'm gonna be requesting that there be some type of communication about it so that parents are aware of what the consequences are going to be. Um, and less along the lines of, uh, at the discretion. I want something that's a little clearer for parents so that they know what's going to happen each time there's a violation.
Sounds good.
Any other discussion, discussion or questions? Okay, we'll move to vote. Are there any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is the Thomiston Public Schools 2020-2021 School Reopening Plan. Um, and I will turn it over to Francine.
Okay, uh, before I begin the presentation, um, I received a message from one of our board members who says, "I can hear the meeting but cannot communicate with anyone, including Stacy, um, to let her know that she's unable to communicate." So Stacy, can you check, uh, Roxy's, um, connection and, um, if, if need be, Beth, uh, give me some guidance as to how you would like to have Roxy be able to communicate if there is a vote taken on this plan tonight.
Oh, she might have just gone off on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was able to get back in by relaunching the whole thing.
Okay, good. Very good.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Did you have any, um, we did make the motion. Did you have any um, further questions on the policy?
No, I was good with that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Francine.
Okay, so before I begin, uh, this presentation, I want to first say that I am not going to have you read uh, page by page with me. That is not the purpose here. So I want to let you and anyone who might be listening to this or watching this meeting know that this complete presentation, including um, the agenda and the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, flag that we displayed is currently available at our website at ThomistonSchools.org forward slash reopening of schools. If you go to our homepage, it'll be the first link on the homepage. Uh, but also you could just type in reopening of schools. Um, so you'll be able to see the change in the calendar, the change in the policy and this particular, um, plan. Uh, I will be updating parents on, uh, whatever, uh, transpires tonight as well. So parents will get directly a copy of the calendar change, the policy change, and this plan when it is completed. Um, also, I want to just put in one quick plug for our parent survey. Don't forget, it's due Wednesday. So, uh, Stacy, on page three, it's entitled Priorities Fall Reopening Model. Okay, right there would be perfect. So, uh, this is the beginning of the plan. And just in a nutshell, uh, the CDC has three tiers and the state has four tiers or phases for their plan. So what I did throughout this plan was I tried to utilize the information from the CDC and apply it to the phase of the state plan. And you'll see throughout the plan these little arrows that the state created so that you'll know what phase of the plan is being referenced when I say things like low risk or more risk or highest risk. Stacy, on the next page, I think, uh, it's very important that I, uh, highlight the temporarily choosing not to participate section. So for board members, uh, staff members and parents who are listening, this section of the document indicates that when we return to in-person instruction, parents who choose not to send their children back to school do not have to withdraw their children to homeschooling. I'd sent a message to parents and staff several weeks, maybe more than that, maybe several months ago, indicating that there might be a possibility of that. The Connecticut Plan is allowing for parents to opt out of in-person instruction with no penalty or requirement for disenrolling. So I think that's an important component of this plan be highlighted for parents. Also, uh, on the next page, uh, that I think would be important for our students and our coaches to know is that if a student opts out of in-person instruction, they are also opting out of in-person extracurricular activities, events, and sports or athletics. So if a student says, uh, if a parent says that my student cannot return to school because of COVID-19 and they are on a, uh, a CIAC team or they are participating in a club, um, typically when they're in, in school in person, they will be, uh, unable to access uh, those activities and sports because they are choosing to stay at home and receive their instruction remotely. I thought that would be very important for parents, like I said, uh, students and coaches to hear. Uh, Stacy, if you would go to the next page, which is about our school liaison, the state plan requires that every district have a COVID-19 Health and Safety Compliance Liaison. I'm very, very pleased to have the expertise and experience of Mrs. Anarchy, who is our school nurse at Center School, and also she has served as our nurse coordinator for the town of, for the, uh, public schools in Thomiston. Uh, she will serve in this role. Uh, no, while no job description has really been given to us by the state, uh, she is willing to, to go into it and hit the ground running. She is already preparing um, an education, uh, and educational materials for, uh, our staff and our students and our parents. Uh, she is already communicating with other members of our staff in preparation for the reopening. She's even working on signage that's going to be posted throughout the buildings and will work in conjunction with some of our other staff to make sure that we have a consistent message throughout our three buildings. So I wanted to take a moment to highlight that. And I, I thought that also to, uh, those of us who know Mrs. Anarchy will have a great deal of confidence in knowing that she is gonna be our connection, uh, to our medical advisor, to the Department of Public Health, to me, um, and to many other, uh, components of this plan. So, uh, special thank you to Mrs. Anarchy. Uh, the next few pages go into communication. So Stacy, if you would go down to where it says communication plans, I'm not going to belabor this or go through it line by line. What basically this section says is we intend to communicate regularly. And what it does is it, it segregates out the type of population and how they may be communicating with parents and the community. Um, that can be read on, on our own time, uh, later. The next section is about, uh, data. So, uh, this is a rather long section here of communication. You can scroll down to data collection. As staff and parents already know, uh, we've begun the data collection process. Uh, that data collection is uh, taking in information right now, uh, according to these bulleted items, basically asking parents uh, what conditions, uh, they believe will be suitable for their child's needs. And then asking staff if they believe that they are, um, unable to return to work. I'd like to make a point about this. Uh, the governor mentioned this, uh, today and so did the Commissioner of Education during the governor's press conference. Uh, staff across the, the state, uh, if you are in higher education like a professor, there's a level of flexibility given to those staff because they're working with adult students. In the case of our staff, I am stating the obvious. They're working with, uh, minor children and they must be in-person in order to supervise the work of those minor children. So if we have a staff member who is in a bit of a quagmire and, and must either stay home because of their own health needs or the health needs of their family, Thomiston is offering as much flexibility as can be provided, um, regardless of the fact that the state is not. Uh, so we are in the first phase of collecting information from our staff about their availability. And the next phase will be to determine if accommodations can be made um, or modifications. And if those can be made, they'll be put in place. Otherwise, uh, those staff who cannot return will be, uh, considered um, out on an extended medical leave. So please understand as, as a Board of Education and for the purposes of the public to understand, our staff will be accommodated as best as can be with the focus being that that accommodation will not compromise but only enhance our education, uh, the education of our students. That's the goal. Any accommodation or modification will either keep things the same or enhance what we will be providing for an education, uh, in Thomiston. Thank you. Uh, the next section that I think is important is facilities. Under facilities, if you can do a sort of a half-page scroll, Stacy, uh, people will be able to see that there's a, a low risk, a more risk, um, and a more risk. And you could see how I've had to separate the more risk into the moderate and the minimal spread. But here is how you would see, uh, us utilizing our facilities. The greatest example that I can give to you is when we're at the red level or lowest risk, also known as high COVID spread, we'd be completely shut down. If we were at the yellow level, which is what we appear to be at currently and what the State Department of Education is hoping we will stay at when it's time to reopen schools, you'll see that we may, um, still have sporting events, but we may not have, we will not have extracurricular activities. You'll see that we'll have full-size classes. It's in the orange, uh, moderate spread where we would have to have the proposal of some other kind of, um, reduction of class size. And I, I'd like to make a comment about that to the Board of Ed at this time. I had asked the Commissioner in one of our many meetings if he and the State Board of Ed would support Thomiston having, uh, an all-in or all-out model uh, for the safety and health, uh, of our staff and students. And he did not answer yes or no. Instead, he replied by saying, "Well, here are some of the ways that you could have a, a hybrid model that's neither all-in nor all-out." And he, he proceeded to give me some, um, examples of some of the, uh, plans that are out there. So needless to say, that gave me the message that we needed to present some type of a hybrid plan. And that's why I put in parent survey the question about a 50% uh, population coming to school at any given point in time. That would be in the orange phase. My, uh, concern is, however, that because of the way our buses run, uh, it may be really difficult to phase from yellow to orange without jumping immediately into red. Because if a child, for example, is in, you know, classroom A and they ride bus 107, I'm picking a number that doesn't exist so that we're not pointing at anyone in particular. Everyone on bus 107 would have been exposed to the child that is in classroom A. That child would be sent to the nurse's office because they're presenting some kind of symptom. The nurse's office would now be, uh, contaminated. And then that child, according to the state plan, would be put into an isolation space, contaminating a fourth location. And if they need to use the bathroom, they'd be put into an isolation bathroom area, contaminating an additional location. No one is accounting for in the state plan, all of the other children that have been contaminated or connected with the child that may be presenting COVID-like symptoms. So I would suspect that everyone on bus 107 and everyone in classroom A, as well as the nurse, would be put onto some type of a quarantine or isolation for a duration of time until which we could get uh, proof that the child that is presenting symptoms does or does not have COVID-19. And that would tell me that we would be moving from yellow to red until we could get that question answered. But I just want to be clear to the board that while the plan has these multiple segments, uh, we may not be phasing through the plan, or as the state likes to call it, the, uh, ramping up or ramping down. We may be jumping right over sections of the plan because of conditions of exposure um, based on, uh, what level of exposure, uh, we are brought, is brought into our buildings. So I, I need to make that clear further. If we were to have every child on bus 107, uh, be isolated or quarantined, that would not mean that they'd be only the children who re- rode bus 107 to that particular building. It would mean every child across the district who was on bus 107 with or after the child who is presenting symptoms, which would then mean we have other contaminated spaces in other buildings with potential, um, uh, contact. So again, we would not even be able to say we're going to ramp up or down in one building. We may have to ramp up or down in an entire district. But I wanted to make that clear. Um, that while we have a plan of action for orange, orange may, uh, never come into play. It may come into play as we initiate the start of the year. But I don't want parents to, uh, count on or board members or staff to count on a particular ramping up process. Uh, the next really important point would be about lockers. So if you scroll down a little bit more, Stacy, there should be a an underlying section about, uh, lockers and bathrooms. So when we return to in-person instruction, all lockers will be, uh, locked. No students will use lockers. Uh, that is to reduce, uh, touchpoints throughout the building to, uh, maximize our, uh, disinfectant, um, protocol, uh, efficiency and effectiveness. And then bathrooms will be, uh, on restricted use. In other words, some buildings may shut down whole bathrooms and um, have fewer bathrooms available to students. While other, uh, schools in the district may be choosing to allow the bathrooms to be used only at certain points in the day because they need to be cleaned in between, uh, uses. So please, again, understand that these protocols are going to be in place uh, regardless of yellow or orange. Uh, and most likely even in green until we really know what green means because green may be 18 months from now when we actually have something completely contained and, and a vaccine to go with it. So, uh, students need to be prepared and teachers need to be prepared for, uh, the way one will have to live without locker access and the way that one will have to manage bathroom use. And that is going to be, um, those, those topics are going to be addressed by 12, uh, different subcommittees within the district. So if you want to, uh, scroll down to the next page, Stacy, uh, keep going past facilities, their daily operations. We have calendar information there. If you scroll a little further. Okay, so, uh, if you can just leave it right there, we'll talk about, uh, what our plans are for daily operations. So what we have in Thomiston, um, I, I, I believe it was Heather who made her point earlier about what other schools might be doing. And I know that parents are thinking that or even may know specifically what other districts are doing because they work in other districts. Uh, in Thomiston, we are using the expertise of our staff. We have been all the way through. We've had subcommittees by staff type, by school building. And we also have a district reopening committee that, um, is used as the conduit of information going back and forth between, uh, me and the, uh, smaller subcommittees. With the completion of this plan that's before you tonight, we will, uh, kick off a 12-committee, uh, series of, um, facilitated meetings that will yield very specific methods of addressing things like no use of lockers, no use of bathrooms, how lunch will work, et cetera. And, uh, those will be set up either by a specific subject area, something that might be unique uh, for that subject. For example, PE, for that subject. For example, PE, physical education has a very unique set of circumstances under which they can engage students. So it would be best to have our PE teachers compile a plan on how to manage PE under these conditions than it would be to have a general education teacher do that. Things like our vocational technical courses, how to manage ourselves in the art room or a science lab. And then special education classrooms and our counseling services and even our pre-K. Those are all different, unique components of our school life. And we are going to be in Thomaston utilizing the experts in each of those areas, including our general education teachers for general education courses, to come up with the finalized, highly detailed plan for staff that we will publish on our website so that parents can refer to them. And, and when they go to make that decision, do I definitely want to send my child into school or do I definitely want to keep my child home? They will have available to them a, a good portion of the answers to their questions about how we're going to live our daily life in person under masks and COVID hygiene regulations. So the whole goal is to provide equity to our students. That's going to be, as we always have been, dealing with equity, managing equity, is to make certain that all of our students, whether they're in front of us or virtually staying in touch with us, will have access to opportunities for an education. Now, if you are an at-home student who has opted out of in-person instruction, you will not feel like you are receiving equity when you can't participate in sports or after-school activities. But that is not what our goal of schooling is. Our goal of schooling is to educate. And those are extra activities that are only available to people that have been approved by their parents to participate in in-school instruction. Also too, for equity purposes, I want to highlight to the board that we had two parents who had difficulty accessing the internet and we were able to provide them with a hotspot during the original COVID closure. Otherwise, we were able to do our online distance learning through whatever means parents already had. So if a parent is having difficulty with technology, we've set up ways of accessing assistance with that technology so that equity could be maintained. Otherwise, I have to also give kudos to the various unions that work with our staff. Their, their regular communication with me, their flexibility, their understanding. I, I, I can't say enough about them. It is because of the rapport, trust, and understanding that we have had before COVID that we're able to work as a team and provide the district with this plan that provides for education, no matter what a parent may decide for their children, and no matter what the state demands of Thomaston. Even if Thomaston may choose not to open, we can't do that right now because the state says we have to. So putting that aside, I want to highlight a couple of things about the calendar decision that we made. Right now, the State Department of Education is telling us that if we were to close down school because of a COVID contamination and go to online instruction exclusively, that at this moment in time, we would have to make up those days of school before June 30th. That is not what we had to do last year, and it is grossly unfair because our staff would be working online and then would have to work additional days at the end of the school year to make up those days just to meet a quota. So I'm, I'm highlighting that for you because as the executive order expires in September, so does that flexibility. So we really do have to have 177 days right now of in-person instruction. And that would cost the district a great deal of money because we would have to pay our staff to work online as well as work in person once we need those catch-up days to be scheduled. So if we go to the very end, Stacy, you'll get to the unexpected finance section. It's nearly the last page of the document. One of the components of the plan, of the Connecticut Plan that I had expected to see was the unanticipated expenditure section, but that was not part of their plan. So I added it. I think it's important that we make a statement about unexpected expenditures and what we will have going forward. And those reports are going to be made available to, should be just a little bit above where you are, Stacy, a little bit above. So unanticipated expenditures, you'll see there, there's a link. Our business manager will be including any COVID-19-related expenditures in his business manager's report, which comes out monthly, typically the day after our regular board meeting. And in that report, you will see any of the expenditures that applied to last year or this year that were unanticipated. And as the year goes on, we will be reporting through that business manager's report any changes to those unanticipated expenditures. In other words, if the state were to provide us with additional funds, how those funds will be used to offset those unanticipated expenditures. Anything that is above the total budget that's been given to us, the curse of money that's been given to us for 2020, 2021 will be reported to the Board of Finance so that they can anticipate how the town of Thomaston will be able to come up with the funds that are needed to continue the school year. So in a nutshell, this, this plan is based on the requirements of the Connecticut Plan. It is in the format of the Connecticut Plan with the exception that I've added this unanticipated expenditure section. What we will be producing over the next several weeks will be the very specific nitty-gritty details that will satisfy us as local Thomaston people as to how we're going to address some of the details of this plan. That could mean that we get a BlackRock school-only type of plan, or a center school-only type of plan, or a science lab-only type of plan segment. But all of those individual appendices to this plan will be posted online for parents and staff to have handy as they need to see what it is that we are doing when we have in-person instruction. There will be a lot of education, professional development, and opportunity for practice for our students, our staff. And we're going to provide as much support as we can to our families. We have staff already working on videos that are unique to Thomaston that will help families with some of the circumstances that they are living under now in preparation for the return to school. If there are any questions, I'll, I'll be open to anything you have right now. Thank you, Francine. Does anyone have any questions? For Francine?
Francine, this is Dave. Thank you for your hard work, first of all. Second of all, I, I want to emphasize for all the parents out there, I see, I see and hear a lot of squawking about reopening schools and the safety of it all. And I wanted to say that not only is it the state of Connecticut that's forcing us basically to go back to school, but I also want to point out that the American Academy of Pediatrics has also endorsed that, that kids should go back to school. And it's a, it's a better place for them to be, safer, more nourishment, both mentally and, and as far as vitamins going on, that sort of thing. Second thing I want to say real quick is be flexible. I think colleges and universities out there are telling, you know, students and professors to have classes anywhere on campus. So maybe that'll work for some of our classes, you know, to go outside if there's an issue with, with the class size and spacing. Same thing with with the cafeteria, you know, if, if meals are grab-and-go kind of prepackaged boxes, you know, maybe a nice day when it's nice out, I'll allow juniors and seniors or whatever to go outside and spaced out that way. And again, I'd like to say thank you for the staff's hard work and all the cooperation with all the unions, et cetera. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. To Dave's point about lunch, Beth, right now, we're working on having either desks or some type of different table setup because in lunch for in-person eating, we have to have the students all facing the same direction, just like they would in the classroom. So in order to promote and secure the maximized space of, you know, the distance, social distancing between children who are eating, we are contemplating desks, or like I said, some other type of table setup so that we can maximize the number of students in the cafeteria or in the eating space. We will not be eating in classrooms. We will only be eating in the cafeteria or some other large space in our buildings. Thank you.
Okay. I, I also wanted to add, Francine, a thank you to you and the administrators and the staff, the reopening committee for all the hard work and the countless hours that you have put into this plan and the work that the 12 subcommittees are going to be continuing to do. And I also would like to commend you for your communication with the board, the staff, and the parents. I think it has exceeded expectation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Francine regarding the reopening plan?
This is Roxy Finer. I would also like to add my thank you to Francine, the staff. You have all done an outstanding job in this very difficult and unprecedented times to come up with something that we can work with. And I would just like to add for our parents that let's remember that everything is fluid because this situation is constantly changing. So please have patience as we work through these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxy. And to Roxy's point about being fluid, this plan was as good as complete sometime late Friday. And then we received an email with a frequently asked questions document where all of our questions would be answered by the State Department of Education. And some of the questions had answers that were different than what had been offered in the past. So I had to check personally with members of the State Department of Education to be certain that what they were sending to us was accurate and then make changes to our plan. So yes, it is that fluid. They know that the deadline they gave us is this Friday, but yet they are still providing us with information because their lives are fluid at that level as well. And further, you'll see in this document, there are some references to protocol that are not yet available. They're forthcoming. But once those come along, those will be applied to whatever our protocols are in this document. But we cannot miss the deadline for submitting this document. So you will see simply a reference to a protocol from an agency or organization. You won't actually see the protocol.
Thank you, Francine.
So if I could say, you don't have to approve this plan. That is not a requirement of the state. The state will just simply accept the plan as written. They're not going to approve it themselves either. So we put on the agenda tonight the potential action. So that if the board wanted to take action, they could. If they didn't want to, they, they don't have to, based on the requirements of the State Department of Ed.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that, on taking action on this reopening plan?
This is Heather. I have one more question. Francine, who decides whether we open at green or orange or yellow? Is that our decision or is that, is the state going to tell us that? How does that work?
Right now, the state is going to tell us that. However, the Department of Public Health is going to come out with a tiered rating system that we would use locally. So there are different ways we can be told to open at different phases. The state, meaning the governor or the State Department of Ed, can tell us everyone across the state is yellow, and then we would open it yellow. It could be that the Torrington Area Health District more locally says, uh-oh, we have a surge in Litchfield County, so we need you to open at orange. Or it could be that we have our own surge or we have our own case within the walls of Thomaston or Thomaston Public Schools. Then we would have to make that decision. But even our local decision would have to be made in conjunction with minimally the Torrington Area Health Group and the Connecticut State Department of Ed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
This is Roxy Finer. I'm going to put the motion on the table because I feel that we as a board should endorse this with a formal vote to show that we stand behind the work that the committee has done to present it to us. So at this time, I'd like to vote to approve and accept the Thomaston Public Schools 2020-21 School Reopening Plan.
Thank Matt, sorry about that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to say, I hope people understand it. Things could change in a week. Everything we did, we've done, all the stuff that the staff has done, Francine has done. It's, it's all great, but we all know that it could change any day. So I just hope the public understands that.
Thank you, Frank. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. We will ask for any opposed to the motion. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Frank, try to have motion to adjourn.
There's a second.
Matt, second.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.